Fellow students, faculty, staff, and guests, welcome to today's town hall meeting. I am Victoria Crocker, Secondary English Education major here at Emporia State University. We are so very proud to have three distinguished visitors at Emporia State University participating in this event. Cindy Appelinski is a 3rd grade science teacher from New Jersey and a 2012 Teaching Ambassador Fellow. Ms. Appelinski will present on the U.S. Department of Education's Respect Project. Respect stands for Recognizing Educational Success, Professional Excellence, and Collaborative Teaching, which seeks to work with educators to rebuild the teaching profession along this entire spectrum of recruitment, preparation, professional development, compensation, and retention. I was also told to allow you to tweet, and welcome you to tweet throughout this, to #EdTour12, A-D-T-O-U-R-12. Please join me in welcoming Ms. Appelinski to the podium. Thank you, Victoria. It's a pleasure to speak with you about your future aspirations in teaching. Good afternoon, Emporia State University and guests. It's great to be here. I'm honored to stand among so many individuals committed to providing our students with an excellent education. It's my understanding that there are actually three Hall of Fame members here today, so please definitely welcome them. And I know that we have two State Teachers of the Year here from Kansas as well, so please give them around. I'm Cindy, and I'm a 3rd grade teacher from Lyndon, New Jersey, where I've spent the last 15 years teaching at School Number 6 in the town that I grew up in, and I received my excellent K-12 public education. My professional life has been dedicated to both my students and my colleagues through being a classroom teacher, a local union president, and a professional development provider committed to providing excellent science education for all students. And that work was done with the Merck Institute for Science Education. But today I speak to you as a Teaching Ambassador Fellow from the U.S. Department of Education. And I know that we have a few past fellows in the room and some current fellows, so I believe we have Bruce, and Marciana, and Kyle, and Jen, and Cheryl. So I think there's five of us here in addition to myself, so if you're here, if you could give a wave, we do not need this alone. The U.S. Department of Education believes that teachers should have meaningful opportunities to both contribute to and understand the policies that impact their students and their school communities. The Teaching Ambassador Fellows support the department's vision by contributing our valuable school and classroom-level expertise to the national dialogue and collaborating to provide specific outreach to other teachers as well as other stakeholders in our public school and education system. During our one-year fellowship, we gain in-depth knowledge of department initiatives and policies, and we have opportunities to provide our perspectives to senior staff. We are also charged with facilitating discussions among educators and listening closely to their questions and concerns so that we can provide authentic feedback to assist the department in making informed policy decisions. Last night, my fellow colleagues as fellows had some time with student NEA members in Emporia and were able to have some dialogue and gain their feedback. And I know today they'll also be meeting with current students and alumni of Emporia's Teacher College, so I definitely encourage you to spend time in those roundtable discussions. But as a fellow and a teacher, I'd like to share a few words directed to my pre-service teacher colleagues in attendance. I won't lie to you, you have chosen a profession that will be challenging, stressful, and both emotionally and physically draining, but you have also chosen a profession that will be deeply rewarding, filled with individual and collective successes. And quite honestly, your efforts and commitment and your skill will change the trajectories of students' lives. So please always remember that you're not alone in shouldering this tremendous responsibility. You are joining a nation full of dedicated educators that are eagerly anticipating working together with you as colleagues and also who believe in the importance of the work that we currently do and what's needed in the future. So in closing, on behalf of the other Teaching Ambassador Fellows and my colleagues at the department, I commend your desire and dedication to teach our nation's students. And I wish each of you the best as you continue in your education, but especially to the seniors here. Congratulations as you graduate from college and you officially enter the ranks of the teaching profession. We wish you the best and we look forward to working with you. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give a big Emporia State welcome to NEA President Dennis Van Rokel, United States Department of Education Secretary Arnie Duncan, and joining them is Ken Reber, Dean of the Teachers College.
Thank you, Student String Ensemble, for providing today's music. Secretary Duncan, President Van Rokel, welcome to Emporia, Emporia State University, the Teachers College, and the Visal Hall atrium. Our visitors just completed a tour of the National Teachers Hall of Fame. The banners behind me representing the city of Emporia and the National Education Association honor both the community and NEA support that has been so critical to starting and sustaining the National Teachers Hall of Fame and its special mission of honoring career teachers for over 20 years. The Hall of Fame's financial partners are listed on the placard to my right and your left. If you are interested in donating, you have the forms that were on your seat for doing so. And the Teachers Hall of Fame staff extend a special invitation to everybody to stop by and visit the Hall of Fame after today's town hall meeting. Seated in the atrium, our Emporia State University Elementary and Secondary Teacher Education members are majors, teachers from the local school district, Emporia community members, a member of the Kansas Board of Regents, the Hall of Fame Board of Trustees, three members of the National Teachers Hall of Fame, two Kansas State Teachers of the Year, the President of Emporia State University, the President of Flynn Hills Technical College, and the Superintendent of USD 253, our local school district, plus members of their leadership team. In the galleries around the atrium are Emporia State University students, faculty, and staff, and visitors. We are very honored to host today's town hall meeting with both of you participating. Thank you. President Van Rokel?
Oh, I'm gonna speak first. First of all, I'm gonna always travel with Secretary Duncan because, wow, what a nice reception. I felt like I was a star along with Secretary Duncan. Let me just say a couple things. I think most of you probably know that my life was a, as a teacher, a high school math teacher for 23 years. Many years ago, when I first started in education, there was a saying that used to just drive me up the wall. It said, "Those who can do, those who can't teach." It used to just make my blood boil. When I was a senior in college preparing to be a teacher, and my sister found a mug for me, one of my sisters, and on that mug it said, "Those who can teach, all others find a less significant line of work." Now, I've lived my life by that, and it's not something you can go around and say all the time, because some people are offended by that. But what I would say to especially all people, "Who are the ones who are planning to be teachers?" Show me your hands. Oh, my gosh, they're all right here. What I would encourage you to do is to hold tight to that phrase and hold it deep down inside every single day of your teaching career, because that is where you get your energy. It's from that deep passion and commitment and a belief in the profession. And now, many years later, serving as President of NEA, I have the opportunity to lead a real effort to change the public perception of the profession of teaching. I say to all the time, whether it's newspaper reporters or policymakers in Congress or the state level, that I take it as a personal insult when someone assumes that anyone with a degree in math can do what I do in a classroom, as if all I had to do was walk in and explain to the students that I already know how to do all the problems in the book. Aren't you amazed? I mean, that is the least difficult thing to do, is the problems in the book. I've been trained in that. I know what mathematics is. But the power of what you create in a learning environment for students, that's the power. And so that's why it's so important to hold that inside. As President of NEA, I want that to be seen as a profession, not something where you hand someone a script and you too can be a teacher, not something where they put a bulletin board outside of every classroom in elementary school so you know minute to minute what everyone is doing. Takes away the creativity and the power and the decision-making of a profession. So it is really an honor for me to be here with all of you here at Emporia, to see the National Teachers Hall of Fame, and also to be here with Secretary of Education Duncan. Arnie is a real supporter and fan of the profession of teaching. And I love when I listen to him talk about the power of what it means for education for every single child in America and the importance of developing a profession of teaching. As we change and make sure that no one enters a classroom as a teacher of record unless they're well-trained, qualified, certified, and licensed, that from day one until the last day you're there, that you're constantly getting better. Every profession grows all the time. You never stop. And so it's a real honor to be here. I look forward to the conversation. Thank you very much for having me.
I'll be quick and look forward to having a great conversation, hearing your questions. Dean, I just want to thank you so much for your leadership. Dennis and I have had, I think, a great working relationship over the past couple of years. And there's so much you're trying to do to elevate and strengthen the teaching profession. And I think we're both convinced that maybe the biggest gift we can give to our country is to have every single classroom have a story of a teacher who is being supported. And if we don't do that, we perpetuate all the social inequities we worry about, poverty, social failure. If we do that well, we talk a lot about the achievement gap, I'm much more focused on what I call the opportunity gap. If we close the opportunity gap, which you guys represent, then our nation's children, regardless of where they come from, have a chance to be really, really successful. I'm thrilled to be here for a couple reasons. Had a chance, thanks to Dennis' leadership, last year to meet some of the Hall of Fame inductees, just a remarkable, remarkable group. Great to meet them. I wanted to see the actual Hall of Fame, so I made a commitment last year to do it. Thrilled to be able to work it as part of this across-the-country bus tour. But to really speak to you, and I say all the time that we're in this generational shift right now. We have about a million out of 3.2, 3.3 million teachers. We have an amazing million teachers over the next four, five, six years that are going to retire. And there are so many things we're trying to do to improve education, early childhood education, more money for Pell Grants, K-12 reform. But I honestly think probably the biggest gift we can give to the country is to attract and retain the next generation of talent. It is literally a once-in-a-generation opportunity. Historically, we have not attracted enough great talent into the profession. Historically, we definitely have not retained enough of that great talent in the profession. Dennis talks all the time about, we lose far too many good young teachers in those first couple of years. But if we can get this right together, if we can elevate and strengthen the profession, then we change children's lives, not for the next couple of years while he's in his role and I'm in my role. We change it for the next 25 to 30 years. And so we intend to spend a huge amount of our time thinking about how we can, how we support you guys as we execute the profession, how we get the next generation behind you to come and do this. And I know people talked about it earlier. If you're looking for an easy job, please leave now. This is not for me. If you're willing to sweat, if you're willing to cry, if you want to have some tough times, but if you have that toughness and that tenacity and that courage, you have a chance just to make a spectacular, spectacular difference. I think every one of us is here. Every one of us is here, and we know who is great teachers were in our lives. And we can point to those teachers who pulled things out of us that we didn't even know we had in us. And if you guys can be those teachers, it makes me really, really hopeful about where we go as a country. So the stakes are high. His job, my job, our collective job is to see you guys be successful. And so we'd love to hear what's working, what's not, how we can help you do well, but just importantly, how to help that next generation behind you step up and say, "This is the best way to serve my country. This is the best way to serve my community. This is the best way to make a difference in students' lives, and I'm in this for all of them." So thanks so much. I look forward to a great conversation.
Helping with today's town hall meeting are two members of Emporia State University's Chapter of Capa Delta Pi, the International Honor Society in Education. They have microphones. As you have questions, please raise your hands. You can see them here, and they will bring the microphone to you or pass the microphone to you. So let's get started.
Can we have an agreement with the hard questions to the Secretary Duncan? And I take the easy ones.
How do you feel?
How do you stand up and say what year you are?
I'm a student teacher in music education. How do you feel that test-based assessments will affect the majority, especially for subjects that aren't tested, such as music and physical education?
So a couple of things on that, and I'll start and jump in. First of all, I think we both worry a lot about music education getting cut at these tough economic times. And I was literally just on the phone, right before I got here, talking with someone in Massachusetts who's very, very concerned about this. I think we are both absolutely convinced that all of our children deserve, we'll call it well-rounded, world-class education. So that's, yes, reading and math are fundamental, foundational, and science, and social studies, and foreign languages, and dance, and drama, and art, and music, and PE. And this can't be just at the high school level, but also for the primary, second, third, and fourth, and fifth graders all the way up. So it's interesting to me, we're at a time as a country, we're trying to get much more thoughtful and sophisticated around teacher principal evaluation. And I think for far too long, evaluation was pretty meaningless, frankly. Great teachers weren't recognized and rewarded. Teachers who were trying to become world-class didn't get the support they needed. Teachers at the bottom, where it just simply wasn't working, that wasn't dealt with either. And so you have folks looking at a range of indicators. We always talk about multiple measures. And if anyone thinks you should focus on one test score, that is absolutely crazy. But if you're looking at growth and gain, if you're looking at peer review, if you're looking at principal observation, I'm a proponent. Are we asking students how the teachers are doing? Again, I think all of us know in our hearts who is great teachers were. If you look at a set of multiple indicators in any profession, that's what you do, you don't just look at one number. So I think getting more thoughtful on that is important. Many states are moving forward in this area. I promise you for all the progress, and I know that won't be perfect, there'll be mistakes, but I always say we can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. And I'm hopeful this year will be better than two years or five years ago. I'm hopeful two years from now will be that much better. Let me give you one example of where arts educator, music educator's done an amazing job. They're in Tennessee, which is working very hard in this area. They had an evaluation for the arts and music that a teacher in Memphis named Drew Davison was really unhappy. Didn't think it was fair, didn't think it would make sense. He got a bunch of his peers around him just sort of fussing. He got a bunch of his peers came up with a very rigorous peer-reviewed process that is not only being implemented in the Memphis Public Schools, is now possibly being implemented statewide in Tennessee. So that's the kind of leadership we're looking for. We always talk about teacher voice, and great teachers step up and do this. In terms of budget impact, it's a complicated question. You will never find a greater proponent for greater investment in education than Dennis and I, but I think we also have to hold ourselves accountable that our investments are getting dividends. And I think in education, sometimes we do that well, sometimes we don't. And so have honest conversations about what's improving students' lives, what's not, investing in those things that are making a difference, and stopping doing some things that aren't. I think historically, we haven't been good enough at doing that.
Now, sometimes I think the subject of testing is lumped into one, as if it's all this high-stakes standardized testing that became pretty much the norm after no child in the behind. Testing even existed before I was a teacher, that long ago. I mean, I used to be a student. So it's not testing that's bad, it's how you use it, for what purpose, and is it informative to a teacher? You want it to be helpful information to know what you need to do differently. So I think one of the consequences of this emphasis on high-stakes standardized task, well, is the narrow way of the curriculum, and that has impacted, as Secretary of Education already said, the arts. I like that they're starting to go from STEM to STEAM and adding the A for arts. The idea that there are certain subjects, and if you know those, those are the only thing that's important in education, which is wrong. And I think we have to build a conversation with parents and community about, what do you really want of education for your center of learning? I'm sure academics are there at all of them, not just math, science, and reading, but arts, physics, civic responsibility. So there's an academic, but there's another part about education that is about all equity. That in this education, one of the purposes of public education is to create that level playing field. That's a role of public education. So not only do we have to worry about the academics, we have to ensure that there is equity of, as Arnie said, of opportunity, also access and opportunity along with the excellence. Another part is this whole civic responsibility, and then dealing with the whole child. We know in this country, in schools where kids don't have the healthcare they need, they don't have the nutrition, the social supports, they're not going to succeed. So to me, as we look at that whole child and that education, we can put testing where it needs to be in balance with other things. Arnie is absolutely right about multiple majors, whether you're talking about a student's learning, the teacher's impact, the school district, the classroom, it's gotta take multiple majors. But most importantly, we need to make sure that we're preparing kids today for a future that none of us know what it is. My grandson is starting kindergarten this year. He's in the class of 2025. None of us have any idea what the five top occupations in 2025 will be. But as you go in the classroom and you teach kids, you can't wait till 2025 to figure out what that is. So we've got to start now, enabling them to be lifelong learners, to teach them how to learn, and high-stakes tests inhibit us, don't help us in that.
Hi, I'm Breida Mitchell, and a student teacher. You had mentioned that you wanted to have support in the classrooms in order to attract and retain new teachers and even teachers that we already have. Where do you propose the support is going to come from for these teachers?
So I've been pretty public, but I think in many places, the entire pipeline doesn't work. So there's not one easy answer here. I think, let me sort of walk you through the whole pipeline. I think historically, we haven't attracted enough folks like you to come into schools of education, to come into teaching. When you look at high-performance countries, and Dennis and I have traveled and studied other places, some of the countries that are out-educating us today are attracting all their teachers 100% for the top third of their classes. We're not anywhere near that, so how we think about that pool, how we better support that pool when you're an undergrad, I think this program here is one of the better programs in the country, you should be really proud. But as you survey young teachers around the country, 62% of young teachers say they're unprepared to enter the classroom. And I always say, if 62% of doctors say they're unprepared to practice medicine, we'd have a revolution in this country. But somehow, we don't value education enough. So really have honest conversations. Are you getting skills, practical skills, classroom experience to go into that classroom? Not that you're gonna be a master in your first year, or even in your third year or fifth year, but are you prepared to be competent and be successful there? Mentoring and induction in most places doesn't work, and we lose so many of our good young teachers who feel unsupported, who feel isolated. We talk about resources and funding. Quick quiz, and same thing with past, I was asking, how much do you think we spend at the federal level, our investment in professional development is each year? Title II money.
I know.
And yes, yes ma'am.
Eight billion dollars?
Eight billion. I wish it was, not that high. We spend, we spend 2.5 billion a year on professional development. And if you put in districts and state funding, it's closer to 5 to 6 billion. And when I go talk to groups of young teachers, when I say that, they usually laugh or cry. They are not feeling that. And so I think how we better utilize, we need to invest more, I wish it was eight billion, but until we get more money, we can do a much, much better job with our collective $5 or $6 billion investment, so we're not losing those great young teachers in their third and fourth and fifth year. So better mentoring, more, better career ladders. We've spoken very public, I think we should be paying teachers, I think, a lot more money. I always say, no one goes into education to make a million dollars, but you shouldn't have to take advantage of poverty either. And I talk to so many young people who are 25, 26, 27, wanna buy a home, wanna start a family, and they leave what they love doing, they leave teaching, because they think they can't afford it. That is crazy to me. And then how we have real career ladders so that those masters, mentor teachers can spend, whether it's half the day, or three-quarters of the day, or a day or two a week, working with those young teachers in their classroom, give them hands-on. So much of special development today is done in hotel rooms someplace, far divorced from reality, you know, what I call vetted PD in the classroom. So I think this entire thing, frankly, doesn't work for far too many people. And what are we doing for 18-year-olds, what are we doing for 28-year-olds, what are we doing for 58-year-olds? We need to be willing to take this on. And I just want to give Dennis and the NEA credit. This is, change is hard. There's a reason why this hasn't changed. I think Dennis and the NEA and others are helping to say, "This is not about incremental change, this is about transformational change." And it makes me actually hopeful that we can get there together.
Just to summarize, he gave a very good answer on it. He's learned, he does this very well. The first part about preparation, we need to make sure it's clinically based. There are too many prep programs where teachers, I know you were a student teacher at elementary high school.
High school.
What's that, English? There are too many prep programs where kids aren't in the classroom enough, and you need to do that, not only to learn the profession, but to make sure it's what you want to do. So it's that preparation. Then, as Arnie talked about, we have horrible induction systems, just a horrible system. We end with a key and say, "Good luck." And according to the Department of Education, we lose 47% of all teachers in five years. That's horrible. No business enterprise could survive, because it costs too much money to recruit, train, and hire people. And we lose them because we don't have those supports, whether it be a mentor teacher. We stick them, not only do we not give them help, but we give them the toughest of the classes and the toughest of the schools to new teachers. We need to change that. But I believe, I love the kid reporters, because they love to say to me, "Well, don't you think great teachers ought to be paid more and bad teachers less?" And I go, "No, I don't agree with that. I don't think bad teachers should be paid anything. I don't think they should be there." It's the wrong mental model. There'll be a good and bad, and we pay these people more. No! You design a system of training and induction that no one is given a group of 34, this day of age, 40 kids, who isn't well-trained. And from there on, it's all about professional development and support. Giving them good, honest feedback, giving them what they need to be better. I've never met a teacher who said their first year of teaching was their easiest one. Never have I met that. And I, it wasn't for me. So it's that, that training, and then the induction. And Arnie talked about career choices. It's interesting, Singapore probably has the most advanced, where, when I think of the people with whom I've worked these years, there were some who were really good and loved writing curriculum. That's not me, but some love that, so there ought to be opportunity to stay in the classroom. Maybe not all the time, but to follow that about curriculum writing, or to be a content expert in one area, or to be a team-building person, or be well-trained to deal with young teachers and be mentors. So there are a variety of responsibilities, and you ought to be able to do that without the choice being stay in the classroom full-time or leave. And the last thing I'll mention, we do not have a recruitment system in this country. We really kind of wait to see who comes, and then we train them well, like here. But what's the system we have to actually recruit people into the teaching profession? Well, I already mentioned Finland and Singapore, one of the things they do is they seek compensation as the undergirding of the whole system. So every three to five years, they look at all of the occupations in public and private sector, and they say, "Let's make them comparable." So for example, I was a math major. Do I go into actuary, science, or do I go into engineering, accounting, or teaching? I chose teaching. In their mental model of that, it should be comparable in terms of compensation. That's why they get so many people to apply to teaching, because it isn't a choice that says, "I'd really love to teach, but I'd make 30% of what I would do with the same college education if I went here." So that's part of that undergirding of changing that. But the recruitment, good solid training in the classroom, clinically based, and then a good induction system will change the system immensely.
Trevor Steinbacher, student teaching. Do you see in the future any sort of continuation with the Physical Education Congress Act?
With what?
The Physical Education Progress Act and their grants.
So my wife is a PE teacher and I grew up federal basketball. Again, just for, so for me, it was basketball, for other kids, it's the arts. How do we give kids a reason to be engaged in school? And growing up healthy, growing up being part of the football team, or the debate team, or the dance or drama club, we have to make sure we have those opportunities. I'll speak for myself, I was one of those young boys, if I had a chance to run around and put on some energy, I could sit and concentrate in class. If I didn't have that opportunity, I was pretty tough on my teachers. And I think these ties between whether it's music and math, or whether it's between physical education, physical activity, and being able to concentrate, there's actually a lot of brain research, brain science, it says these two things go hand in hand. And so where you see, whether it's the arts being eliminated, or PE being eliminated, or recess being eliminated, it's, it's bad for kids, it's bad for education, it's bad for where we need to go. So whatever we can do to promote more physical education, to promote more extracurricular activities or whatever it might be, to think about recess, we haven't talked about nutrition today, we're trying to do a lot to make school lunches and breakfasts more nutritious, all of these things, Dennis sort of talks about the undergirding, sort of the infrastructure, the fundamentals, our kids' physical, social, and emotional health have to be being met if we're serious about B P biology and chemistry and physics. And if those basic things aren't taken care of, we're kidding ourselves. So whatever we can do to promote more physical activity, to promote habits that will last a lifetime, to think about the nutrition piece of this, to think about if students need counseling, getting that, if they need eyeglasses, getting them that, making sure they're safe. Coming from Chicago, one of the toughest things I've dealt with was my student's safety in the neighborhood at two and from school and having kids envision a future for themselves with somebody their peers who are frankly being shot and killed. Those are all very real issues that collectively we have to take on.
You know, I was involved in athletics all my under-high school and a little bit in college. And then I coached for many years. I never understood why people discouraged the importance of athletics and the physical education and the arts, because why in the world would you not want what turns kids on to be part of school? I, I didn't get that. And when parents would discourage their kids from participating like in wrestling or football or basketball, and then saying, well, maybe they'd be hurt, I'd say, so where would you rather have your son from 2:30 until 6 o'clock every day with me in the resting room or running around? I just think it's part and parcel of making a whole person. I would never give up what I had in that. And I can tell you as a teacher, and I use my coaching, that team concept is really important in education. And in the new world of work, the ability to work effectively in teams is very powerful. And so to integrate the concept of learning with teamwork in athletic endeavors is really important. You know, in a football team, if you're downwind and you can't see anything that's going on, but you have to be running the same play the quarterback gets. And the, the concept of education of us working together is the same thing. And having this, having an interest in the success of the people around you, all of you must realize, because you've experienced it, how much more of education is done in group learning? That's team building. It's how to help others be successful, not just you. So I just think it's a natural partner, not only for the development of the whole child, but for keeping kids interested in school. I never worried if the only reason a kid wanted to come into my math class and did well was because he wanted to stay eligible for football or basketball, that's fine with me. I just want you there. I want to be able to have the opportunity to give you what you need to succeed later in life. So to me, it's a little brighter. We ought to be encouraging all of that all the time.
I'm an English education major, first semester, senior year, so I started my internship. But I have a question that I believe pertains to all future educators. So standardized testing is going through a lot of changes for students, but in order to become a teacher, we have to take hundreds of dollars worth of standardized tests. So can we hope for any change in the future for what it means to become a teacher?
Oh, I hope so. I hope that's totally reasonable.
Walk me through what standardized test you have to take as a teacher.
We have to take, we have to take content test, which I think is maybe more than $100. We have to take general teaching test, if you don't pass them the first time, you get to take them again. And my brother's also a future educator from here and he's having problems because he doesn't have enough money to take his content test. So it's something where some classes have tallied it up, $9,000 from a small classroom of future teachers go to taking tests in order to become a teacher. And we've talked about how teachers don't get paid very much, but we still have to shell out this money to take these tests, but in classes, we're learning about how standardized testing is bad. So, well, not bad, but not necessarily the best method of assessment. So why are we assessed this way and can we expect a change?
So great, great questions. I don't have any easy answers on it, just to be really clear, none of those requirements come at the federal level. We're all trying to figure out, not to ask a lot, but you know, I'm always trying to figure out the federal level, state level, local level. Two questions you're asking, one is just the actual cost, which can be prohibitive, and are there scholarships to enable that? But then you're asking a much more fundamental question, do these make sense? Just listening to you, having some demonstration of content knowledge does make sense to me. It's not, it doesn't make you a great teacher, but you need to know some math to be a math teacher. But you're, can you pass a test and that makes you a good or a great teacher? Actually, that's pretty ludicrous. And so I think, you know, really trying to figure out and get how we assess future teachers, current teachers in very, very different ways. Obviously, if you can pass a test, if you've got five degrees from the finest universities, your kids aren't learning, it doesn't sort of matter. And if you don't have five fancy degrees, but your kids are learning a heck of a lot every single year and they're engaged, I want a lot more of those teachers. So the content test makes little sense to me, the second one, I don't want to understand, I don't understand, I know I get too far ahead of myself, but may not frankly be logical. And I think it's a challenge to state boards of education and to governors, I met with your governor earlier today, we do a lot of things that are pretty old school frankly. And this is sort of, I think, part of your collective opportunity responsibility is where we're asking things of you or your students that don't make sense. I think it's really, really important that your voices be heard.
I'm just going to piggyback on one thing, and that is the affordability. I was reading a report on what happened to be a school in Michigan, that in 1990, 75% of their revenue came from state aid, 25% from tuition. Today, it's reversed, 75% from tuition, 25% from state funds. We are starving the university systems as well as K-12, and it's driving the cost of college out of sight. There are too many that it's becoming either totally not possible, or you graduate with this incredible debt and then you're going into a teaching, which probably doesn't give you a lot of extra spending money to pay it back. We've got to do something about the affordability. As I look at the group of people that I taught with all the years, first of all, we get a lot of first generation kids from their families who are in college and they're going back into their community, what a wonderful thing. We get a lot of educators' kids who go into education. And then when you drive the cost of college so high, you are really denying too many people an opportunity. There's this one chart I saw, I just can't get it out of my head, it had two columns, kids from low income and from high income, and it had three rows across there. One was the lowest one-third of academic achievement, the middle one-third, and the top one-third. The top one-third achieving kids from low-income families had the same probability of going to college as the lowest one-third of wealthy. See, that's access. And when you drive the cost up, these are bright, talented, wonderful people who would love to go to college. Or if they want to, let's give them an opportunity. So as much as I appreciate the Pell Grants, I appreciate the department under Secretary Duncan and the Obama administration changing the student loan program so that kids get money instead of banks, that was fantastic. But we're going to have to take on the affordability question, and that's the point. If we look into making sure the tests are meaningful, they do what they're supposed to do, but even if all of that's right, and the cost is prohibitive for people to do it, there's something wrong there. We've got to tackle that affordability issue.
If I can really quickly piggyback, one quick thing that's important for this audience, there's lots of things that we're still fighting for with Congress, we've got the Pell Grants, got $40 billion, that was huge. There's something you guys have access to called income-based repayment, or pay as you earn. One thing I worry a lot about is talking to people who said they wanted to go into teaching, had a great heart, were really right, hardworking, but they had $800,000 loans and simply couldn't afford to go into education. So we got this passed, this is the law, not something we're fighting for. You can look on our website, and your monthly loan repayments are reduced now based upon your income, so if you're making less money, you pay less, if you're an investment banker, you pay more. But after 10 years in the public sector, 10 years of teaching, 10 years of working for a nonprofit, social service agency, whatever it might be, all of your remaining debt is erased, is forgiven. So it's a huge benefit. We have a long way to go, that was a really important victory that you, this cohort, me and Dennis are a little too old for this, but you guys have a chance to make lower monthly repayments and after 10 years of your good standing, anything left goes to zero. It's a pretty big deal. So again, hopefully those folks who have larger student loans out there, this will remove one of the impediments for them following their heart and following their passion coming into education.
Hi, I'm Jared Kitzman, senior PDS elementary. And my, my wife is a teacher and I'm going to be a future educator as well. And I listen to you and I want to see the glass half-full. But in 30 years, we've known that recruitment isn't where it should be, pay isn't nearly where we think it should be. And we have so many issues that we've been dealing with for the last 30 years. And nothing's, some things have changed, but nothing to any major amount. So my question to you is, I love a rah-rah hoot and holler and good speech, but what good, concrete things can come in place? Because a game plan is only as good as once you implement it. So, you know, I, I listen to you both and I, and I want to get excited, but then if nothing's implemented, we just go back home and, and have the same thing over and over again. So.
It's a, it's a really, really important question and I, hopefully I'll be here another four years, Dennis has another, I mean, two years left. And so this is not where we have the next 10 years to sort of think and plan. And I think he feels a tremendous sense of urgency, what's his legacy going to be, mine as well. Let me, this is really about a social movement. And I think it's really important for Dennis to provide leadership, it's really important for me to provide leadership. But I spend a lot of time trying to understand social movements, studying the civil rights era. And honestly, I think government and Washington are not where movements are led from, they're led from real people. And this is why this Respect Initiative, we're a machine, I have some ideas, Dennis has some ideas, we want to cheerlead, we want to help. I think this is about teachers, this is about you guys stepping up and saying, we want a fundamentally different situation here. And we can support, we can help, not to put it all back on you, but this is about teachers around the country standing up and having their voices heard, saying, we want to be held accountable, we want to work hard, or whatever, here are the four things that we need to be successful. And I think teachers, great, vastly underestimate your power and your ability to be heard and to do it together. And if we had teachers all over the country, at the local level, at the state level, at the national level, demanding the kind of changes that we're talking about, I think the country would respond. I think the country would respond. So we want to help and facilitate, we've done 200 of these conversations around the country, we're going to do a couple hundred more going forward. But this is about teachers, I think, taking ownership of their profession. And unions can help, we can help, but we need folks like you saying, here's the bargain, here's the trade-off, here's what I'm willing to do, but you have to meet me halfway. And we're having that conversation with state legislators, with folks at the national level, with folks at the local level, you guys are talking to parents in the community. I think this is a movement that can't be stopped, I really do. So, you know, is it, can I guarantee it's going to happen? I can't. Am I in my heart deeply hopeful we could break through? I, I, I think so. Last thing I'll say is sort of why, why is this so important? Obviously, we're all here because we think education is so important, but sort of three things now. I think this is a civil rights issue of our generation. I think the dividing line in our country today is less around race and class than it is around educational opportunity. This is an economic imperative now, there are no good jobs going forward if you don't have good education, the economy has changed. May be surprised to know that this is a national security issue. 75% of the young people in this country can't qualify for the military because their education is under-repaired, they're physically not fit, or they have a criminal record. So if you took any one of those, civil rights, economic imperative, national security, this is a big deal. You put these three things together, how can we set the status quo? We can't. And so I really do think this is a moment of our movement whose time has come, and I really think it's important for teachers to leave this.
Really appreciate that question. There are many days that I wake up and I ask myself that too. Let me just step back into history a bit. If you look at, you know, our history from 47 to 80, post-world war, in that time, of course, you were poor, but I was broke. And the philosophy of this nation was that whatever our country needed to succeed, education was the answer. So right after World War II, the GI Bill of Rights, GI Bill sent millions of young men and women to college who would never have gone without it. The largest investment of government ever. As you move into the 60s, not only was there the Civil Rights Act and the Voting Rights Act in the 60s, but it was Elementary Secondary Education Act, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. It was always about using education to level the playing field. For me, in my life as a student and as a teacher, we turned a corner in 1983, when a nation of risk came out. And the report itself is actually quite good, they saw the information age coming, the recommendations here and there, I think to this day have a lot of merit. But the whole national attention was, was placed on the introduction. And some good writer wrote things like educational disarmament. And if a foreign power had done to our educational system what we have done to ourselves, we'd consider it an act of war. For the first time in my life in 1983, public education was labeled the problem, not the solution. And the world has really changed in those years since. And that's to me, what we're fighting. And from then on, what happened was, if education is the problem, what do we need to do to fix it? And there was program after program after program to tinker with something. I know, let's change the due process law for teachers and then everything will be fine. Let's have testing in grade three, five, eight, and then everything will be fine. Those are not the answer. And so right now, the challenge before us, and I still see the glass as half-full, is because we have to transform that system. It's not one thing, it's going to take all of us, but I believe we have the opportunity right now to do that. See, we have a system, but this can be kind of a long answer. In systems theory, the thing that's, that bugs me the most, they say, is no system can produce anything other than what it's designed to produce. So in this country, we have about a 25 to 30% of kids who drop out every year. If you're African-American, Hispanic, it's closer to 50%, and that happens every single year. It doesn't fluctuate, it's about constant for the last 20 years. So we have built a system that will always graduate about 75%, except for this other group is only 50%. We have to change that system. And we're going to have to do that collectively, and I love what Arnie said, part of the responsibility is right here with us, the union, the professionals, we have to lead the profession. We can't say no to other people's answers that don't make sense, we have to come up with our own. We have to be able to take on the toughest challenges in schools that are not delivering for kids at all and say, here's what we believe will make a difference. And we're going to have to do that with others because we can't do it by ourselves. But that's what, we're going to have to transform that system and I believe we can do that. And it's about building a profession. I started off with the respect of the profession. We can't do that if people don't see your work as professional work, if they don't have the respect they ought to have for professional decisions that you make every single day. I said to a business guy the other day, I said, so in your business, what's the largest span of control? For any manager, how many people do they supervise? And he said, well, we try to stay to about 12 to 18. I said, as a high school teacher, I had 160 people I supervised. I saw that every single day. Don't tell me my job is a line, assembly line job. It's an upper-level management job, I have to manage time, resources, content, and I have to deal with 160 individual personalities. So we need to honor the profession, the The decisions you make are incredibly difficult. You have to be able to look at a face and decide whether they need a hug or a push. You have to know when they have a question before they open their mouth. That isn't some mechanical skill. Those are complex decision-making processes that you will use every single day, and it is an awesome profession. So we need to change that system that honors the profession and gets everybody involved in understanding that it is not acceptable in the twenty-first century, in the richest and most powerful nation in the world, that we continue to graduate seventy-five percent. It should just be unacceptable. And for me, I tell our members all the time, and Chris Hill, I'll tell you this, quit asking for permission. When you see something that you believe in your professional knowledge and experience will be better for kids, do it. Proceed until appropriate. If you're doing something wrong, come tell me. When it feel they count, you go with your gut. And what you believe is right for kids, and do it. That's how we change it. One last question.
My name is Bethany Leedy, and I'm a student teacher at the elementary level. School funding is usually described as adequate. What is your definition for school funding?
Inadaptable.
Hey, Matt, I just go back. We think of education as an investment. Other folks think of it as an expense. And when you look at achieving the gap, I think of it as the opportunity gap. The fact that matters most to public education is underfunded. And often, in many places, the disparities between wealthy districts and poor districts are horrendous. So this one's really personal for me. I ran a Chicago public school for seven and a half years. Eighty-five percent of my students, four hundred thousand students, lived below the poverty line. Ninety percent of my students were black, Latino. And I had less than half the money each year in suburbs three miles north of us along Lake Michigan that had a much more affluent population. So thinking about less than half the money for thirteen years kindergarten to twelfth grade. So the children who need the most help and most opportunity get the least. And again, I wanna challenge us to spend every single dime wisely. And we don't do that enough in education. We don't stop doing things that don't make sense. We have to hold ourselves accountable. We talked about the professional relevant money. But this is the best investment we can make. And I always talk, pay it to career. Early childhood education, best investment we can make. I do not need another study. You see, we're trying to put a lot more money. It's leveling the playing field. If our five-year-olds can enter kindergarten ready to be ready to succeed, we're gonna be in good shape. We have children who continue to enter kindergarten who don't know what's in front of them, from the back-of-the-book, who've never been read to. That's a pretty tough challenge for the best of kindergarten teachers. So whether it's there, or this kid at twelve or four, Dennis talked a lot about higher education, making it more accessible, more affordable. We have to invest. And just to be really clear, there's a debate in this country now. There's a set of folks who look at education as an expense. And there's a set of folks that wanna cut funding to Head Start, that wanna cut funding for kids at twelve, that wanna reduce Pell Grants. And we disagree. And we're fighting for sort of which path, fork in the road, which path is the country gonna go down. And what I just, again, looking at China, looking at India, looking at Singapore, looking at South Korea, these countries are not scaling back their investments in education. They're going full steam ahead, investing, innovating, being creative, using technology in different ways. And your future students are not competing for jobs here, or Kansas, or the United States. They're competing in a global economy. And our children are either gonna be competing in a level playing field, and we're gonna keep good jobs in this country, or jobs are gonna go to where the valedictators are. So this is just a fundamental fight for this country, what do we believe? Do we think we can educate our way to a better economy? Or do we think in tough economic times, this is something that we can just sort of take a timeout for a couple of years and see where we're at? And we're in a fork in the road, and we'll see where we land. Dennis, I can't clear where we stand.
I think part of the problem in funding is we create ourselves. We tend to always just look at the level of funding. And I think a far more important aspect is the equity. Arnie mentioned the difference in what he had in kids from Chicago and a few miles away. I once wanted to create a video showing that huge disparity. The schools that have these Taj Mahal's, these beautiful science labs, they're more than willing to have you come in and videotape their school. The others don't want you there. And you can understand it. They don't want to see a picture of their school. That inequity is what's killing us in school funding. The idea that there are schools where they don't even offer AP classes, they don't offer calculus. How in the world are those kids supposed to compete for college or technology training, or career tech jobs, when they don't even have an opportunity to take those courses? One of the most powerful slides, I sat through about a two-hour presentation with PISA, the International Assessment. And there's one slide that, it was just so powerful. In Finland, they say they never strive for excellence, only equity. They said excellence will take care of it, if you provide that opportunity. So if you looked at a bunch of bar graphs showing the range of achievement of students in every school in Finland, it's fairly comparable. I mean, of course, there's a range. But it really doesn't matter which school you go to. You have the same opportunity, the same resources. AP classes, computers, smartboards, technology, well-qualified teachers who aren't there on a revolving door. In this country, it makes a difference which school you walk into. So for me, it's not just the level of funding, it's whether we provide kids the same shot, that equity, that it shouldn't matter where you live, you ought to have that shot. Until we take that on as a nation, that we just say, "That isn't the way we want it." You can't build a society based on our ideals if you deny that opportunity to those kids. So I really like Secretary Duncan, he's been talking about this, the opportunity gap. And that's a good way of describing a lot of different things, whether it be school funding or others. It's just not the same.
Please join me in thanking Secretary Duncan.